Hello, Thousand Oaks. Welcome to this candidate's debate for the Thousand Oaks City Council. I'm David Maron, a member of the League of Women Voters, and I'm your moderator for this evening. Tonight, we have our candidates with us. They'll be giving opening statements, followed by answers to the questions you submitted on our website, and then we'll have closing statements from each candidate. Before we begin, it's my pleasure to first introduce the president of the League of Women Voters of Ventura County, Betsy Patterson.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to welcome you all on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. 100 years ago, the 19th Amendment was ratified, giving women across the nation the right to vote. We hold the right to vote precious since not all people were given that right in the original Constitution. And for 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been dedicated to encouraging civic engagement and informing voters about candidates and the issues. From its beginning and continuing today, the League is a nonpartisan organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Each of us has a voice in our government if we use our voice, our vote. To be informed, voters, we must ask questions of the candidates and understand the pros and cons for each ballot proposition before we cast our vote. Thank you for joining us tonight. We hope many of your questions are answered by the candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. So our presentation tonight will be about two hours. We have one minute for opening statements. We'll give the candidates one minute to respond to the questions and one minute for closing. Perhaps we would like to give them more time, but we have eight candidates. We want to make sure that your questions get a chance to be heard. We're going to begin with our first candidate. We randomly assigned the order, and Wayne Smith will be our first candidate. Wayne, you have one minute. I hope you can see that on your screen in gallery view. And when you're ready, please unmute and begin.
Hello. Thank you for inviting me to this forum. I'm very glad to be here, and I'm running for the Thousand Oaks City Council because I feel that I can contribute something to the results that comes forth for the city. And it's my hope that I can be a good contributor and help keep things moving along and keep Thousand Oaks a great place to live for all the citizens. And I'm available as, will be available as a city council member to help speak for the population, for the people that need a representation in the city.
Thank you. Wayne, before we get to the next question, you may want to check if anyone in your home is playing the audio. It seems like we're getting a little feedback from maybe a second computer. So that person should just put it on silent so we only hear yours.
Yeah, is this better?
We're still getting a little echo from yours. Some other device perhaps is playing?
On a phone or something.
Yes. We'll let you look into that while we move on to the next candidate. So our next candidate is Colleen Anderson. Colleen, when you're ready, one minute.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Colleen Anderson, and I'm running for Thousand Oaks City Council. The main reason is I feel that we have an experience gap in our council right now. We need to have, I feel, a little bit more contemporary expertise, someone with broader knowledge on a level of economic, on a level of competitive capabilities vis-à-vis other cities of our size, and someone with a little bit more of a go-getter attitude. I'm not running because things are broken. I'm running because things aren't getting done. And as a businessperson, my whole objective is about getting things done.
Okay, thank you. Our next candidate is Danny Chulak.
Thank you, and I just wanted to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters for inviting me to participate in this forum. I'm running for city council to bring a much-needed perspective to the conversations that our city is having. As someone who grew up in this community and is deeply rooted here, I have a stake in how the city council addresses the problems facing our city. As a young person, I have a stake in how the city council affects or poses solutions to the lack of affordable housing. I have a stake in how we deal with climate change. I have a stake in how we begin to make it easier for residents to start small businesses. I have a stake in how we care for those without homes, differently abled, and other vulnerable communities. I have a stake in how we begin to make TO a welcoming community for future generations to thrive in. These problems have been unaddressed for far too long, and it is time that somebody actually affected by these issues be elected to the council. I bring a much-needed and long overdue perspective, and I hope you'll join me in my fight to create a city that works for all our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Dan Tweet. We'll get you to unmute there, Dan, and then we can let you get started.
Hi, Thousand Oaks, and thanks, League of Women Voters. I'm running again. I ran in 2018 because I really feel like government at all levels is not responsive to the immense amount of technological change, which is onrushing. There's something called Moore's Law, where the amount of computer processors on a chip has been doubling every nine months. And right now, we're set to see a billion-fold increase in processor power in our lifetimes, in 15 years. So governments are simply not addressing this, what's called the technological singularity. And we're not getting enough citizen participation either. I'm a ham radio extra class licensed call sign KK6VDR. I'm a CERT-trained emergency responder, and we really face existential threats to our civilization and to our heritage as humans that we need to immediately start addressing on all levels of government.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Kevin McNamee.
Thank you, David, and my thanks to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event, a much-needed event for the city of Thousand Oaks. My wife and I have so much enjoyed living here in Thousand Oaks. We love the look and feel of the city, and I wish to partake in the continuation of that look and feel of Thousand Oaks that we've grown to love. Everything from the Ring of Green to the wonderful people who take pride in their neighborhoods and ownership of their city. I like to think that I bring a skill set to the council by my background as an owner and operator of businesses here in the city, as well as other successful businesses I've run in the past. I'm a college educator at Ventura College, where I help students develop a skill set so they can get jobs in the water industry, as well as expert witness and retired reserve police officer dealing in law enforcement and crime issues that face public safety today. And I look forward to, as a council member, to bring those skills to the table. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Al Adam.
Thank you, League of Women Voters. I'm Al Adam, council member and mayor of the city of Thousand Oaks. It's been a challenging year. Needless to say, we are getting things done. We've had a tremendous COVID response. We're helping our small businesses. We're helping our social service agencies. We designated $1 million for rental assistance that we got from non-taxpayer money. We adopted an eviction moratorium to prevent businesses and residents being, to be evicted from their homes. And at the same time, the city's still running. We repaved 95 miles of roads. We're finishing up our streetscape project, and we're creating many jobs in the new biotech sector. Public safety, of course, is my number-one priority. I've been endorsed by the Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association, the Ventura County Professional Firefighters Association. I want them to have the best training and the best equipment possible, and that's why we were just assessed and evaluated as the number-one safest city in California once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Frank Underly, if I pronounced that right. Go ahead and unmute Frank, and then we'll get started for you.
Thank you, David, and thank you, League of Women Voters. I appreciate it. And my panel of colleagues with me, thank you, because being in public service, it's really important to note that, you know, this is something that we need to do for the future. It's something that we need to strive to make it like a teamwork, a team, team community with everyone. And I believe that when I get on the city council, that I will put a good voice for the people. As a realtor, I am in tune with everyone. I see everyone on, a lot of, a lot of people on a daily basis. I have been a coach most of my life, coaching my kids, and I believe in teamwork. I believe that we need to make Thousand Oaks a better place and take care of what our, what our people need to know.
Thank you, Frank. We'll wrap up with Joel Price. Joel, have you unmuted?
Thank you very much. I'd like to quickly thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the forum. I am Joel Price, and I'm once again running for city council because I love and believe in Thousand Oaks. My passion for public service began in 1977, when I first joined the Los Angeles Police Department, where I served 37 years. I'm a 30-year resident of Thousand Oaks, having raised my family here in this wonderful community. And in 2006, I began my service with the city of Thousand Oaks as a traffic commissioner, and I did the work, putting the time to learn how things work within our city. I was elevated to Planning Commission 2011, appointed to the council in '12, and ran successfully in 2014. I'm in a position unlike any other candidate before you tonight, with the exception of Mr. Adam. I can hit the ground running on day one. You'll hear a lot of talk this evening from people who want your vote. They'll propose programs and policies that sound almost too good to be true, and in many cases, they are. You see, you don't know what you don't know. Having served in this capacity before, I do know. And with the encouragement I received from a number of residents, I'm ready to-
Thank you, Joel. Have to stop you there. We're going to begin our first question. Colleen, you're up first on this question. And this is an issue throughout Thousand Oaks rather than Ventura County, and it's the issue of providing more housing, workforce housing, affordable housing. Please share with us what you think has to happen to increase affordable housing in Thousand Oaks. What are your policies?
I'm Oriyan Mudh. Thank you. This is a major priority in my view. It's a top priority, I feel, for the city and for the city council. We have employers who have been expressing for years that they do not have the housing capabilities to bring in the people and house the people that they want to house. We have young people, my own son included, who would like to make a home here, but we don't have the affordable entry-level housing for first-time buyers that we need to have to accommodate them. We have people of low income who can't afford to live here. We have workforce, teachers, firemen, so forth, that can't afford to live here. COVID has given us a very good opportunity to look at places that we already have that are vacant to repurpose as one option. But I think we have, we have a problem we need to solve, and we need to get it done, and it needs to be a priority.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Dan Tweet. Same question, Dan, about how you would promote or increase affordable housing.
Yeah, great question. I know California is said to be like 3 million housing units short statewide, and we are in danger of falling under a mandate to increase housing. Now, what I would like to see is actually an integrated approach, which incorporates a lot of Buckminster Fuller's solutions, which he had a design science called Living Re and Dimaxian. We can actually build very rapid, like geodesic kind of modules in backyards that function as both greenhouses and shelters, partially earth-sheltered domiciles, and also include zip line capability, which can be deployed with drones. And then the Japanese-style microcapsule hotels can actually fit into these buckyball-style, you know, structures that can actually be excavated with air pressure and very rapidly built and deployed under the AD law.
Thank you. And candidates, I'll be unmuting you a few moments before you're ready to speak. So if you see a prompt on your screens, please unmute. Al, you're up next. Get you unmute.
Got it. Yeah, housing has always been a very sensitive topic in the city of Thousand Oaks. We've been told time and again, people want to preserve their neighborhoods. However, in our latest attitudes survey, people have been willing to consider housing in a concentrated area with shops, restaurants, and transportation. And to me, that is along the 101 corridor and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We've identified some opportunity sites there where we can put in housing. I think it's extremely important that we create entry-level and workforce housing in this city. People need to be able to live and work in the city that they, that they're in. It's good for the environment, and I've been asked many times by many employers to please bring in some more housing so we can attract young people to this community and keep this a sustainable community. We can do it, and we can preserve neighborhoods at the same time and use a measured approach that I think will work to achieve our goals of opening up the walls of this city and allowing young people to get started.
Very good. Wayne, you're up next. Please share with us your policies for increasing affordable housing in Thousand Oaks.
Yes, I would like to see us make more housing available to seniors. And I guess it would be pretty much along the 101 corridor, where we could allow some builders to come in and develop some housing units that would be acceptable. I'm concerned that people that are living in our community are wanting to maybe retire, but they can't afford to retire and stay in the same, stay within the city of Thousand Oaks because the housing is too expensive. So they end up having to leave the area. So I think that's an important issue, particularly for seniors. Sorry about the feedback. I don't know how to fix it.
You might turn down the volume on your PC or laptop. That might help a little. But we're hearing what you're trying to say, so we're okay. We're going to move on to Joel Price. Joel, please share with us your policies to promote affordable housing.
Well, thank you very much. Those efforts have already started, quite frankly. In the last several years, the number of the projects that have been proposed are including a number of affordable units. And that's something that we need to continue to do in our city. It is, it is being almost forced upon us by our friends up in Sacramento. However, some of the proposed bills are a little bit egregious and would not set well with our residents here. But 299 being a good example there, that will include a number, I believe it's 14, if memory serves me correctly, of affordable units. Those are low-income units. And any future project coming before the council should also include a number of affordable units. So I think that work has already started. I was a member of the council who has always voted in favor of projects that would, that would increase our housing stock for lower-income folks.
Thank you. And Kevin, next, let's hear your thoughts about promoting affordable housing in Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, David. One of the aspects that's never being discussed is that of what government can do to help reduce the burden of costs associated with building. For example, a homeowner was building her dream home here in Thousand Oaks, and what she found, that there was duplicated city, county, state, and federal inspections that delayed the project. Some of these inspections conflicted, resulting in two-month delay in the development of the project, which means dollars out of their pocket. Now, government doesn't care if there's a delay or not, but ultimately, that homeowner that is building a new home winds up having that delay cost them money. Another is that builder shares with me how it's five years from beginning to end of the project result. That's $85,000 additional costs onto the project. Also, the project at Herbs and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, city council asked for a $1 million donation in order for that builder to get approval. To me, that's extortion from the government, not illegal, but to me, it's extorting, and that drives up rental prices.
Thank you. Danny Chulak, let's hear from you, please. Your policies for affordable housing.
Yeah, I think that affordable housing is perhaps the most important issue that we could be discussing this year. Not only are we pushing our young people out of the city, but it would be ridiculous to think that our elderly, who are on fixed incomes or social, social security, can afford to live in the city of Thousand Oaks. It's, it's just not, not an option. So I want to envision a city where we keep families together that are young and that our elderly can all continue to live in the city. And one of the ways we have to do that is to put pressure on developers to include more affordable units in the developments they build. And also, I would like to propose an additional community land trust be established in the city of Thousand Oaks that would decrease the current price of housing in the city of Thousand Oaks and the housing that already exists. So those are two proposals that I would have. And I think it's crucial that we address this issue, perhaps the most important issue that we can address.
Thank you. Next, Frank, we'll wrap up this question with you for about how to increase affordable housing.
All right, great. Thank you. I think we need to move fast. It seems like, you know, everything's moving slow in Thousand Oaks for affordable housing. I know no one wants to have, you know, cheaper homes next to them. No one wants to have, you know, granny flats made out of the garages. But you got to also realize that being in touch with people, I just found out from a client of mine that Amgen just announced that they're doing indefinite stay at work at home because of COVID. So now we're going to have an influx, and we're product in demand. We're going to have an influx of people moving out possibly. We're going to, we're also going to have people coming in, but we need to build these projects. You know, don't get the contractors the big dollar. I've seen the numbers. I think the city has enough money to maybe back some of these and keep the money for us and not letting big business or big contractors, you know, take those profits away from us.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start the next question. Danny Chulak, you'll be up first. And the question, Danny, sort of along the lines of development. It's now we're going to focus on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And for years, I've been asking this question of candidates, I mean, their views for Thousand Oaks Boulevard, but things have happened over the years. So let's drill down, and I want to tell all of you candidates, many of the questions ask for concrete solutions, specific answers. So just to let you know that your viewers are looking for specific answers when possible. Danny, so the question is, what do you think, what are your plans to support the development of Thousand Oaks Boulevard as planned? Do you agree with those plans? What do you think should be the future of Thousand Oaks Boulevard?
Yeah, so Thousand Oaks Boulevard is perhaps one of the most controversial developments that is currently underway. For me, I appreciate any attempt to make Thousand Oaks Boulevard more walkable. I think making the city of Thousand Oaks more walkable is not only the, a way that we're going to make an impact as far as climate change is concerned, reducing the amount of vehicles on the, on the road, but also will help reduce traffic. And so I support a lot of what's happening on TO Boulevard. My main concern is that it's not primarily about certain developers making profits, but that we actually focus on whether or not these units are affordable for residents of the city of Thousand Oaks. And for me, that will always be my primary concern is whether or not these units actually help solve the affordable housing issue while also creating a more walkable city.
Thank you. Al, same question to you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we have some great plans for Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and they're in a long time coming. But we are, you can see progress already. We pretty much finished up our streetscape beautification project down at Herbs Road as far as our campus master plan. We want to revitalize our downtown. We want to make it a gathering place for young and old alike. We want to make it a recruitable area for businesses to show off. We'll build an amphitheater there. We'll have a number of public amenities. And we do have some housing going in. 299 is a project near Tarantula Hill that will include some affordable units that we're very excited about. It's a, it's a beautiful mixed-use project. And I will say that throwing the word extortion around, extortion is a criminal act, threats of violence to achieve money, I think that's very ill-advised words. The developers of 299 paid $1 million into a community benefit fund in exchange for us deferring their fees for a couple of years so they could get the project built.
Thank you, Al. Joel, same question to you. What are your views on the current developments with TO Boulevard? What do you think should happen in the future?
So the Thousand Oaks Boulevard plan was over 25 years in the making, and it was adopted back in 2012. And I'm happy to say that there's been progress made, and there is continued progress on the horizon with a number of developers who have already expressed interest in some of the other properties. Folks have, have made it clear in this community that they don't want the fabric of their neighborhoods changed. So building in the downtown core is the smart thing to do. Building on other opportunity sites within the city is equally as important. And the Kmart site would be one such location. As was mentioned, this will get people out of their cars, put them in a walkable environment, reducing our carbon footprint, emissions, and really making Thousand Oaks even better place than it is now. So we need to continue with the plan as it was devised and presented and voted on.
Thank you. Colleen, please share with us your thoughts about the current developments and what you think should happen in the future for TO Boulevard.
Well, I just want to echo agreement that I think the Thousand Oaks Boulevard project is a very valuable project. I think we, we need that town square and that city center in Thousand Oaks. And I think that the way that it is envisioned and the design of the plan allows for that in a, in a very beautiful and in a very useful manner. We are going to be using that space not just to recreate, but to get together as a community, to enjoy culture and art, and just our beautiful weather, our beautiful city and each other. I think it's vital, as I think Al mentioned, as a recruiting tool. And I think it's vital to, to give a, an update to our city that's, that's been a long time coming and is certainly going to add to the quality of life. So I believe in the Thousand Oaks Boulevard project. I think it's very important to our city.
Thank you. Kevin, please share with us your thoughts about TO Boulevard.
Thank you, David. I'd like to make it very clear. I'm pro-jobs, pro-business, pro-monitored growth, slow growth, because our city needs to move in that direction. However, what's being proposed along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, what the government or city council is not telling you, is that one-bedroom apartment only has 1.6 parking spaces underneath. What that means is inadequate parking. People are going to park in the neighborhood surrounding the area, and at 2:00 in the morning, that person walking back home is susceptible to being mugged, raped, robbed in the process. So right now, the high density they're putting down there does not have adequate parking. Also, it'll increase density. Anyone who thinks that they are going to live and eat and work downtown is not in reality, because if one person lives in Pasadena, works in Pasadena, the other one works in Camrio, they need two cars, and they need to move back and forth. You're going to have a traffic jam down there, parking hazards, and it's not going to be well done. You don't need to put this all in one area.
Thank you, Kevin. Wayne, we'll hear from you next, please. Your views on TO Boulevard.
I would like to see the project that's been in progress for a number of years to be continued because I think it is going to make a very good change for the Thousand Oaks Boulevard area and improve the appearance of the city and provide some more additional affordable housing that's now not moving on very quickly.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Dan Tweet next.
Yeah, thanks. The Thousand Oaks Boulevard project is, is very attractive-looking, and I do like the fact that the pavers that they're using are permeable because that allows rainwater to replenish the aquifer, something that hardscapes do not do. And this is a common problem, you know, throughout urbanization. We were not allowing aquifer recharge. All that rainwater is rushing off to the ocean. But anyway, I was mentioning zip lines earlier, and you may think it sounds kind of weird, but with these would actually be deployed on demand by high-powered drones. The drone would actually pull the zip line off to the other location, and then it would, the drone would come back and pull your microcapsule hotel to everywhere you want to go. And this has the added benefit of being a sealed, you know, isolation thing because we're in a pandemic situation, and this could, pandemic could get even worse. I mean, this is a relatively mild pandemic, but we might need to use technology to restructure how we live and transport and do all kinds of things.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just checking my order here. Al, we've already heard from you. I must have missed somebody. Did I miss you, Frank? Thank you. All right, we'll get you unmuted. All right, we'll get you unmuted and wrap up this question. So Frank, please share with us your thoughts about T L Boulevard.
Um, the T L Boulevard project, I have been perusing it, watching it for years. Granted, it is moving slow, but you can't do fast growth because by bringing in fast growth, you got to still adapt. Like, you know, I was driving down Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I saw the, the new, new fangled crosswalks. They have one of those on Borchard where I live and I don't know how safe those are. It's like looking at it, you got a new thing. Now the lights are in the street instead of around. You know, there's one on Borchard. I've almost hit people. Think that needs to be changed. The housing, I, I like the housing, the mixed use housing. I think maybe, maybe make it a little more topography-ish or something, because three stories is going to make it really look city-ish. And then we got to figure out a way to slow down the streets because all the, all the apps tell you to get off the one on freeway, take Thousand Oaks Boulevard when everything backs up.
Thank, thank you. I think I got everybody on that one. We're going to move on to the next one. Dan, you'll be up. Before we do though, I want to let the audience know initially that the Zoom system was allowing chats. We're not capable of being able to process all your chats as they come in, so that feature has been disabled. But thank you to those who were offering some suggestions on improving the technology. So we'll continue on. And Dan, the first question to you is, please tell us about your particular position on cannabis dispensaries and Thousand Oaks.
Thanks so much for that question. You know, I actually hosted a college radio, public affairs show called Radio Free Hemp from 1994 to the year 2000 at K U C I in Irvine. And I was concentrated on restoring industrial hemp, which actually has been done in all 50 states with the recent USDA bill. And one of the things Trump has done right, in my opinion. But it is the crop, it is the plant that could save the world, you know. Now, the recreational aspect, I think, you know, families need to be, be brought into the picture, monitoring. You know, our brains aren't mature until 30 years old. And, you know, we need to have more support systems where, you know, people look out for each other's mental wellbeing and their brain maturity and their, their age of consent. It's a, it's a, it's a tough picture. But, you know, I think with enough community involvement and enough support systems, people are not going to go over the edge, you know, of using it or, or, you know, doing bad things.
Thank you. Joel, what is your position about cannabis dispensaries and Thousand Oaks?
Well, as someone who spent a, a number of years in law enforcement and, and started back in the days when that was still a felony, I never thought that I'd see today that we'd be legalizing cannabis. At the same time, I, I've learned a great deal over the years and was part of the council that approved the very first medicinal cannabis location in the city. I do think that it's a worthwhile endeavor to take baby steps and not open the doors to widespread cannabis stores. The council, I, I believe wisely acted in just the medicinal arena and not the recreational. That is certainly an option now given to everybody now that the state has authorized delivery anywhere in the state. So, and we've now required those businesses to, to register with us and pay taxes to us. So I'm in support of it. I, I, I know that there are people out there who benefit from it. And I, I'm anxious for the first one to open.
Thank you. Colleen, please share with us your views about cannabis dispensaries.
So once again, I, I agree with what was just said. I see the benefits medicinally. My father-in-law is a cancer maintenance patient. He's not a survivor. He has a terminal cancer that just has to be maintained and I've seen it help him. I work in the VC area and in the startup area. It's a huge area of focus for that community, for our community. I think, again, we've done a good job of taking baby steps and focusing on medicinal marijuana. I, I don't think going beyond that at this point makes sense. I think we have a lot of other things that we need to do and focus on. So I think we're at the right place with that right now. And I, I wouldn't move to expand on that at this particular time.
Okay, thank you. Danny, please, your thoughts on cannabis dispensaries and T L?
Yeah, so I'm in support of cannabis dispensaries opening. For me, not just with, with the cannabis industry, but with all industries in the city of T L. I think the city council and the planning commission has to look at what types of businesses we're allowing to come into our community. So I'm in favor of cannabis dispensaries opening. But I'm not in favor of the potential for corporations to take advantage of our community by opening dispensaries that just take away revenue from the city of Thousand Oaks. Ideally, I would support, I would support dispensaries that are owned by residents in the city of Thousand Oaks so that we ensure that the money is staying in the city instead of being extracted from the city.
Thank you. And Wayne, please share with us your views on cannabis dispensaries.
I kind of agree with what Colleen has said about it. I think where we're at is just fine. But I don't see moving forward with additional dispensaries. And I just don't think that's needed right now.
Okay, thank you. And Wayne, is it possible that there's like a second, second set of speakers or something attached to your computer? Maybe that might be what's causing some of the feedback. We're going to move on though.
As far as I know, I don't have any speakers on.
No, no phone, no separate item like that? Okay. All right, Al, we're going to move to you, please. Al, please share with us your thoughts about cannabis dispensaries.
Yes, thank you. The council took this issue up a couple of years ago. We were approached by a number of residents in the medicinal field, humanitarian concerns about residents that had medical problems and they really felt that medicinal marijuana would be a benefit. So we did approve two medicinal marijuana facilities here in town. They have yet to be built. We approved them in distant areas away from schools and, and the general population. We wanted to make sure that they were separate and autonomous. We're, we are not in favor, I am not in favor of recreational marijuana in the city. We're trying to rebuild our boulevard. We've been approached to put recreational marijuana stores in the boulevard. I said no. CBD stores in the boulevard, I said no. We don't want that for our boulevard. We want a different look altogether. We do allow delivery, but the, the delivery people are supposed to register us so we can collect a little tax on it. But as far as medicinal marijuana, I do see some humanitarian benefits of that.
Thank you. Frank, share with us your thoughts about cannabis dispensaries.
Okay, um, I, I'm sorry. I just, you know, medicinal, medicinal purposes, I think that's fine. Recreational, okay, so I'm just right after prohibition right now when everyone's saying alcohol is bad. Marijuana for recreational use, I know it's approved. We have a small town here and the kids all want it. I, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's important. I don't think it's something that we need to do. I can adapt later on, possibly, unlikely. I just, medical, yes, medicinal. Nothing good happens with, with recreational marijuana. It's, it's a segue, it's a segue drug. I'm, I'm totally opposed to it. I'm sorry. It's just, it's just the way it works. And I am not going to want to, you know, there's one in five, but I'm not going to approve because I don't think it's something that our families want. It's, it's, nothing goes good with recreational marijuana.
Thank you. Kevin, we'll wrap up with you on this question about cannabis dispensaries.
Thank you, David. Great question. I'm going to put on several hats. I'm going to put on my clinical hat in private practice as a doctor here. Also, my researcher hat from UCLA School of Medicine, as well as my time spent as a reserve officer with the LAPD, now retired. Marijuana has two aspects to it. One is that there's good clinical research out there showing there is medicinal benefits to certain populations. The other side is that there is definitely metabolic brain changes that occur with chronic use of marijuana, changes of glucose metabolism, causes slower thinking. Teenagers with heavy use become lifetime addicted. It's one of those that captures the hearts and minds of our youth and they wind up getting their pleasure out of smoking the marijuana instead of learning a skill that's needed in our community to further and become a good members of our society. I am very much opposed to a dispensary. It should be a schedule three drug, not a schedule one drug. But that's something that Washington DC has imposed upon us and needs to correct. Thank you, David.
Thank you. And Kevin, we'll stay with you to begin the next question. That'll make the muting, unmuting a little more seamless. So Kevin, we haven't talked about the economy yet, but what will you do to help bring in good paying jobs, help the economy? Also though, please explain how would you advance the economy while helping the environment as well?
Great question. I'm going to put on my professor hat from Ventura College in the Water Science Department where I train students to enter the water and wastewater treatment facilities that we turn on the tap and take for granted that there are someone behind the scenes that make that happen. So I would like to, in the water industry, combine the combination of taking the water from the Hill Canyon plant that's ultra pure water. It's purer than the water we take out of our tap. We can take the 87,000 gallons a day, pump it back up to Cuyahoga, which distributes water throughout Ventura County. And we become less dependent on Ventura County, on Los Angeles Municipal Water District. That would pump 11.4 million dollars into the Thousand Oaks economy. And when you put more money in the economy, it stimulates it. There's two things that need to be in economy. Adequate money and quickness, fastest, quick, how quick that money moves. So by allowing our money to stay in Thousand Oaks and not going to LA Municipal Water District, you now stimulate Thousand Oaks economy, but also we preserve our water resources and make them adequate.
Thank you. Frank, we'll go to you. What are your thoughts about improving the economy and how would you balance that while helping the environment?
Well, thank you. First thing, first thing, the problem with the economy right now is COVID. You know, we've been unjustly shut down. Our, our, our streets are, our businesses, everyone's not working. It's, it's, it's almost on the ridiculous and that needs to be changed. We need to figure out a way to get a hold of Gavin Newsom. We need to figure out a way to get our streets open. It's like, you know, you look at the city of Ventura, there's 150 deaths. And that's over a course of eight months. You know, I, I get the COVID in the beginning, but the COVID now is, is detrimental to these businesses every day that they stay closed. They're losing thousands and our community is losing hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it just needs, it needs to stop. We need to go after, after big biz, big government and tell them we need to open. Orange County did it. They're open. Riverside did it. They're open. We need to get open.
Thank you. Danny, we'll go to you next. Danny Chulak.
So for me, I think the most important way that we can support our local economy is make it easier for residents to start small businesses. If we make it easier for residents to support, to start small businesses, streamline the process, the permitting process, all the above, take away the financial barriers, that will allow more revenue to remain in the city. I think also the city has rightfully looked at the biotech sector. And not only these couple of big companies, but supporting biotech startups. So we bring good paying jobs to the area, not just relying on a couple of companies. As far as the environmental aspect is concerned, we need to make sure that we're putting pressure on developers not only to utilize sustainable practices in the construction of these developments, but that in the long term, that buildings are sustainable, whether through solar energy or different means. So that we're making sure that we're caring for our environment with the development that needs to be done in the city.
Thank you. Joel, same question to you about how you'll help advance the economy while protecting the environment?
Yes, thank you. I think some of those issues, or some of those good suggestions were just touched upon. Building standards and including, you know, water reuse and capture in building projects, we would certainly go a long way toward that. There is in fact a, a group of venture capitalists who have a significant amount of financial backing that is very interested in developing the Rancho Canejo area into a biotech hub. Along with that comes a good number of high paying jobs. And that's going to make housing, again, an important aspect to think about. So that will certainly help improve the economy. It will get people who are living and working here in Thousand Oaks. And that's always a good thing. There's the additional benefit that comes from that. Again, getting people out of their cars, onto alternative methods of transportation. Younger people enjoy using Uber. They enjoy using scooters and bicycles. And there's quite a few folks out there that bicycle to work. So I can see that happening.
Thank you, Joel. Al, same question. What would you do to advance the economy while protecting the environment?
Thank you. Yeah, you wanted specifics. I'll give you specifics. I'm creating jobs literally every day here in the city of Thousand Oaks. We have the, one of the most important developments in the time that I've lived here for the last 40 years. We're building a biotech hub out in the Rancho Canejo area. I have relationships with a major venture capital firm, along with the Real Estate Investment Trust that builds bioscience buildings. We have 12 startups started out there so far. They're paying six payer jobs. We have a million and a half square feet of, of commercial space dedicated to the biotech industry and it's only going to get bigger. We, we could very well be building the next Amgen out there. As far as the environment, my, my reckon on the environment is, is second to none, I believe. In fact, in the next council meeting, I'm bringing forth a single use disposable plastic ban here in the city of Thousand Oaks. I have a strict tree ordinance. I'm enabling solar. I banned rodenticides by the use of the city. And so the environment can be protected and, but we can have high paying jobs at the same time.
Thank you. Colleen, same question to you about advancing the economy and protecting the environment.
I, I agree that we definitely need to keep courting the growth of our biotech sector. We are, are home to some of the strongest companies. And Beth Seiderberg and the Westlake Bio Partners that both Joel and Al mentioned. Beth is a former Kleiner Perkins Silicon Valley person. The fact that they're recognizing the capabilities and the desirability of Thousand Oaks to be a home for their venture is something we should all be proud of and certainly something we should keep encouraging. As far as the environment is concerned, I think we have done a great job and we need to keep, keep doing a great job with all our new developments to make sure that they're built with sustainable standards and environmentally low impact. And I also think working on creating a more bikeable and walkable city will help and will help our employers as well, being able to attract younger generation workers who want to get around like that and reduce our carbon imprint.
Colleen, thank you. Wayne, same question to you. How would you advance the economy while helping the environment?
I would like to see us encourage more development in the biotech sector and also encourage the small businesses that want to be developed by individual owners throughout the city. And as far as sustaining the environment, I think that the city of Thousand Oaks has a lot of good policies in place that are working towards that goal. And I would be someone who would support continuing what we have in place now.
Okay, thank you. And Wayne, you're, you sound great on that one. You've solved your technical difficulties. So thank you for that. We're going to move on to Dan Tweet for his thoughts about advancing the economy and helping the environment.
Great question. I'm an advocate of something called Solarcoin, which is an alternative currency that you generate just by having sunlight fall on your solar panel. That's signed up one megawatt hour of solar electricity equals one solar coin. And if people, existing solar users would just sign up for this, they'd be like printing free money. Now, there's another interesting pricing thing called hours equals price coin, where a merchant agrees to price something at a fraction of a customer's time. Let's say you had a book, it was priced at 10 minutes. So a guy that, that makes $6 an hour, he would pay a dollar for the book. A guy making $600 an hour, he would pay a hundred dollars for the book. But, but this has been tried and merchants actually can make money this way, more money than they were with the old pricing. And this reduces inequality. It's a very innovative system that's been very heavily explored. Hope coin, hours equals price coin. And I've got many other suggestions, but no time to go on.
Thank you. We'll move to the next question. Al, you're up first. Going to stay a little bit with the environment and start talking about climate change. We have several questions around this. Given that climate change is occurring, what do you think the city should do? And give you some thoughts. I mean, do, do you think there are specific changes that should be made in the general plan? Should the city look into desalination? What are your thoughts about dealing with? What are your thoughts about dealing with climate change?
Yeah, the city is very well aware of the issue. In fact, we were just awarded the Beacon Award, which was given to us because we dropped our greenhouse gas emissions to an appreciable amount that they thought to give us an award on that. Our fleet is at least half electric and we have hydrogen vehicles as well. We are very sensitive to the environment here in the city of Thousand Oaks. And, you know, as I am. And part of it also comes with how, how we develop it going forward in the city of Thousand Oaks. You know, we want to get people out of their cars. We want to limit those vehicle trips, get people walking more. That's going to help as well. But I, I think that it's, it's an ongoing effort here in our city. And we are working well with, in fact, we have a hydrogen station now that we, that we've, has been built in town. And we hope there's more to follow.
Thank you. Dan, we'll go to you. What are your thoughts about dealing with climate change? Should the city make changes to the general plan or look at a desalination plan? What are your thoughts?
I'm sorry, I can't, oh, I'm already unmuted.
Yes.
Well, climate change is possibly dealing with, with factors that are not manmade. I think there is manmade factors too. But the, the sooner we get away from fossil fuels and go electric, the better. Obviously, the sooner we switch to an interconnected electric grid across the whole planet, that's going to drop the price of electricity by about a factor of a third. And we really should have a global money standard based on the kilowatt hour. That's the fair way to value goods and services in civilization. Because everyone uses electricity. It's the common currency of the, of the planet already. And, you know, we have to remember that, that there's one third of the human population is effectively held prisoner in totalitarian countries. And America is the hope of these people in authoritarian regimes. And we need to do better here and, and live by human rights to, to give them hope, to give people hope around the world.
Thank you. Wayne, please share with us your thoughts about dealing with climate change and what you think Thousand Oaks should do to prepare for the future.
I was looking at the plans that are in place in the city of Thousand Oaks. And I was thinking, they have really come a long ways and are doing a great job now. And as a city council member, I would join together and support the efforts that are being done. I think they're moving in the right direction. And continued progress will be made, should be made.
Okay, thank you. And Frank will go to you. So Frank, question is, so your thoughts about climate change coming to Thousand Oaks? What should the city do to prepare? Should it include desalination plant?
Okay, so, so Santa Barbara did a desalination plant. They, they pulled it apart. They took it down. Dsal is not the way to go. The water, the water that we need is from the delta. And we need to figure out a way, again, we need to maybe band with the other, other cities around us and talk to, talk to Washington. They're doing things that aren't, aren't benefiting us. You know, you, you look, you look at to, to stop the carbon footprint. Well, let's do all these, these cars that are electric. Those batteries aren't, aren't biodegradable. So we put hundreds of thousands of cars that are electric. They're not biodegradable. That's going to, that's going to hurt something else. I like the idea of doing the solar. I think we should probably work with the schools. You know, you look at, get them on a solar plan. You look, they, they spend a ton of money on solar and it takes a real, real strain on our electric.
Thank you. Colleen, please share with us your thoughts about dealing with climate change?
So I, I've read the city's, the city, what the city is doing on climate change and I follow it. I also think as part of the general plan, they're, they're doing a great job of focusing on addressing climate change and in the way that the city can and what the city has under purview. And I would continue to obviously support that and expand that as a city council person. One of the things I'd like to see the city do to address climate change is with respect to our fires that we are having in this area and our open space. I know that we all have to keep our defensible space around our homes, but we're also losing a lot of our environment with climate change, creating these fires that are happening more and more. And I think we have to look at our open space and include that in our fire mitigation strategies so that we can reduce the impact that that has on the climate and reduce the impact it has on our lives.
Thank you. Joel, same question to you about dealing with climate change?
Yeah, so I was, I was the mayor in two thousand and sixteen when the city hired its first sustainability manager. And Dr. Helen Cox has done a tremendous job of putting together a climate action plan for the city of Thousand Oaks. A lot of the metrics that were used are being achieved, as was mentioned. I think we've probably won a number of Beacon Awards. I actually accepted three of them at a League of California Cities event that I was at. I believe that was in two thousand and eighteen. So we are certainly moving the needle in the area of sustainability. I was an early adopter of solar. I always encouraged the city to explore other opportunities to use solar and other city owned properties and, you know, employ any other methods, methods of reducing greenhouse gases. The fleet, as was mentioned, when I started with the city in, in two thousand and twelve as a council member, was about forty percent of renewable or alternative fuel vehicles. And it's my understanding that's now up to sixty percent. So we are going in the right direction.
Thank you, Joel. And Kevin, same question to you. Share with us your thoughts about dealing with climate change?
Thank you, David. Good question. Let's share just some reality here. The earth has historically gone through heating and cooling cycles where it corrects itself as it goes through it. Everything from volcanoes under the ocean to volcanoes above make a huge difference on climate and climate change. We have to look at what we can do locally to help, but let's be realistic. China and India are the greatest polluters of carbon dioxide. They still use coal to generate electricity. We wind up here on the city level trying to do what we can, but it's a drop in the ocean compared to what China and India need to do. On our local level, yes, we can make an effort and I support that effort. And such as timing the streetlights, so we're not sitting there waiting for the light to change. And we're burning up more fossil fuel as we sit there waiting for the light to change. Moving city vehicles as we're doing over to hydrogen and/or electric. Those are all nice things, but in reality, as George Carlin says, mother nature's going to do what mother nature's going to do, like we have any influence on it. We need to get it India and China. Let's do what we can at home, but let's be realistic, there's only so much we can do.
Thank you. Danny, we'll wrap up this question with you.
Thank you. Yeah, so I definitely am in favor of the city's ban on single use plastic. I'm really pleased to hear that. And of course, there's a couple of other small changes that we can make as a city to make an impact. And one of those that I'm proposing is that we offer a curbside composting option for residents, like a lot of other cities have done in California. And methane is one of the most dangerous greenhouse gases. And when, when food waste isn't disposed of properly, it can be really detrimental to the environment. So that's one change that we can propose, in addition to protecting our open space, which is an obvious one. And, and caring for wildfire prevention like Colleen brought up. I think it's really important that we explore other avenues, like encouraging residents to plant trees and other similar proposals that residents can take in their own lives to help collectively care for the environment as a city.
Thank you. We'll start the next question with Frank. And this is one where, again, the audience is asking about concrete solutions or what your proposals are. And we're getting very close to the residents, their specific needs. And they want to know about addressing things like homelessness, mental health, joblessness, addiction. What are some of your solutions to these issues? And I'm sorry, you only have one minute, Frank, but please try to give us, you know, your best answers to what you would do if you were elected. How would you deal with some of these issues?
Right. The, the homeless problem is, is unique that, you know, you look at it, a lot of people are thinking that let's take care of all of them. Well, we have a local homeless problem that are good people. We have a influx of people from the inner cities coming here because our homeless people aren't as aggressive. I think we need to enforce stricter penalties to those people. We need to, I, I, I like the idea that, you know, we have the churches, they're giving them food every day. You need to create a self-worth with the good ones. You need to let them figure out like they're accomplishing something, baby steps. Get them like either doing litter cleanup, let them doing graffiti removal and earning a living. Not talking about taking it, food away, but earning a way and give them a self-worth so they can feel better and get, get back to society. Get a plan. And you, you figure the ones that are mentally challenged, they need to be put in hospitals and we need to help them because they-
I'll be there. Thank you, Frank. Kevin, same question to you as far as dealing with some of these very important social issues like mental health, homelessness, addiction. What would be your solutions?
Thank you, David. My work at the Free Clinic here in Thousand Oaks gives me an insight to physically working with these people on a real basis with them on, as I see them clinically. Anything we do for the homeless must not encourage populism and dependency. We must encourage self-reliance. Now, we have to also look what government has done to keep them self-reliant on the government. For example, counselors share with me how they work with people in the schizophrenic population. Get them on medications and counseling, they get a job. But the way the laws are written, that their free counseling and medication's taken away as soon as they have a certain dollar amount in the bank. So once they save up enough money in the bank, they lose their free medication, free counseling, and they're, they're unstable, lose their job, and they're back on the street. We need to actually adjust the laws. And while government is enabling these people to remain trapped as prisoners in this cycle, we need to do things to make it, that they can get out and become self-reliant, independent people. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Dan, same question to you. So what would you do to help? What would be your solutions to issues like homelessness, mental health, addiction?
Yeah, another good question. You know, half the so-called differently domiciled population is there by choice. You know, they're kind of adventure campers. But, but half of them are truly needy. You know, they've been dealt a bad blow by circumstances. So you have to kind of segregate those two solutions. For the, the ones that have just fallen on hard times, you know, they can be helped by, by existing programs. The two one one support system is, is actually in US and Canada. It's a great human services phone. You just dial two one one, they hook you up with resources. But, you know, some cities have had success with letting the homeless do litter pickup, as was proposed. You know, and another thing is invasive plant removal is, is important. And actually, these invasive plants could be made into something called biochar, which is a carbon sequestration soil additive. And it's worth about eight bucks a gallon. And you just make it with a pyrolytic process, reduced oxygen. So that's kind of relating back to the climate change there.
Thank you. Danny, same question to you about dealing with some of these problems like homelessness, mental health issues, addiction?
Yeah, so first off, I just want to thank the city of Thousand Oaks. For around a year ago, they hosted a forum on homelessness. And one of the things that we learned at that forum is that the majority of those who are unhoused in the city of Thousand Oaks, grew up in Thousand Oaks or used to be residents. So the narrative that these people are coming from other cities, other places is completely false. These are neighbors. These are our neighbors in our community and it's our obligation to care for them. I am in support of a permanent housing solution for these community members of ours that would have wraparound services and case management to help these individuals thrive. And so I think that's something that's crucial to remember in this conversation, that these are our community members and it's our obligation to care for them.
Thank you. Joel, what would be your specific solutions for these social issues?
Well, wow, a lot of the issues that, that have been raised in that question are generally under the purview of county and state government. They're not doing the job, so they can't be ignored here locally. We need to step up. And thank you, Danny, for mentioning the city's symposium on homelessness. I have been back to Washington DC a number of times. And in going back there, talked to members of HUD, trying to find other ways that we might be able to impact this problem. And there's, there's just no funding coming out of Washington for that. So our faith-based community here does a wonderful job of providing for the people that they can, but they too are overwhelmed. So we need to work collaboratively with the county level and state level organizations and agencies and see if we can't come up with our own local solutions to what are our local problem. Very, you know, important to point out that a lot of the homeless people here are homegrown. Very important. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Joel. And Wayne, please share with us your thoughts about your, your solutions for issues like homelessness, mental health, joblessness, addictions?
Yes, I think that what we need to do is to encourage faith-based organizations to get involved and have drug rehabilitation programs. Because a, a big percentage of homeless people are there just because of drugs. And if you get them off of drugs, if you can give them an opportunity to change, get back and straighten out their lives, they're going to do it. That I think would be, you know, one of the biggest ways to help with the homeless situation.
Okay, thank you. Al, same question to you. How did, would you solve some of these social issues?
Thank you. It's a big problem. We have anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred homeless people in Thousand Oaks at any given time. I would say we are managing the problem, we're not solving it. We're offering intervention. We have two wonderful vulnerable population officers, Juan and Josh. And I've been out on tours with them that deal with the homeless every day. We have Harbor House, we have Luton Social Services, we have County Behavioral Health. We have all these things to offer to homeless people. So I do believe in intervention, but I also believe in enforcement. This is not Santa Monica. This is not some of the cities where the homeless population has overrun the city. We're going to enforce our laws. We're not going to allow camping on sidewalks and things like that. But that being said, the, the real answer in my mind is permanent supportive housing. I am working with the county and talking to Mike Powers, the CEO. I've told him that our community and the council is interested in that type of housing. That's the only real solution to get these folks off the street and into a safe place.
Thank you. Colleen, your solutions to dealing with homelessness, mental health issues, addictions?
Okay, so let's start with homelessness and mental health. And you were asking for specifics, so I've, I've actually been thinking about this quite a bit. And one of the ideas that I'd like the city to explore is, I guess, to Danny's point, creating homeless housing in an area that is close to and accessible for care and treatment. One of the areas specifically that I'm interested in is the area next to the Ventura County Health Department, which is right next to the Thousand Oaks Mall. There's quite a bit of space there. It would lend itself very nicely to homeless and mental health housing. And you have the services right there. Drug addiction is, is another terrible problem. I think we, as a community, and especially our law enforcement, has worked very hard to try to deal with that in a caring manner. Our, our sheriff's department, I can't, I ran out of time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Joel, we'll start the next question with you. Want to talk about an issue that's been asked about in all the cities? And that is, let me just go ahead and do that. Okay, Joel, so the question is, dealing with race issues, social inequity, social justice, racial justice. These are very powerful concerns that are at the forefront, whether in Thousand Oaks, the state or the country. So share with us what you think the city can do to improve these matters and share with us any areas where you've been involved in the past.
Well, I think, I think the first thing that we can do is listen. If you're not willing to listen to the, the complaints of others, the positions of others, the injustices that other people feel that are being placed upon them, then you're, you're not going to be able to solve the problem. As a police officer, for quite a long period of time, I've worked in the inner cities. And I recognize that we, we police differently today than we did when I first was on the job. And that, that's the right thing to do. I was a member of the National League of Cities Public Safety and Crime Prevention Committee. I sat on a panel where we discussed race relations. I offered solutions, things that we had done in the city of Los Angeles that I think, quite frankly, made, made us better police officers and made us better understand the, the way that we were viewed by the public. So we need to listen and then-
Thank you. Frank, same question to you. What do you think the city can do in regards to social and racial justice? And what have you done in the past?
Okay, thank you. That's a big one. That's a big one. You, you look at the Black Lives Matter, that's, that's- You you look at the Black Lives Matter, that's a, that's a big issue. Here in Thousand Oaks, I've been here eighteen years. I don't really see a racial issue here. You know, I'm seeing, I'm seeing L.A. have a big problem. I'm seeing Chicago have a big problem. You know, Martin Luther King said a great statement that no one's getting, and it's real simple. Don't judge a person by the color of their skin. Judge it by the merit of what they do. No one's remembering that. You know, we have a great quaint town. Our law enforcement treat every everyone equally, I believe. I've I haven't seen anything in the news at all about any racial injustice in our town. Our our police officers are phenomenal with that. I've been a football coach. I I see players. I see all races. And their ability is what I look at, not their color.
Thank you, Frank. Al, I ask you to join us and give us your thoughts about what the city can do to improve social and racial justice and what have you worked on in the past.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, actions speak a lot of the words. Our hiring policies in the city of Thousand Oaks, I think, are second to none. We are the most inclusive and diverse workforce that I have ever seen. We hire women. We hire minorities. We hire people of color. I'm very proud of that. Of the three hundred and eighty-one employees that we have, we by far exceed the demographics in the city. And I think that that's something that's that's a a good thing and a real action on our part. As far as our police force, they are very socially aware. The Safe Passage Program, which I'm involved in, is a wonderful program that deals with at-risk kids and and vulnerable families that he gives the meals, keeps the kids occupied and off the streets. We're working with the community every day there, and they were fantastic during the demonstrations. All our demonstrations were peaceful. And finally, housing, social justice really begins with housing. We need affordable housing here. We want everybody to be able to have a chance to live in the city of Thousand Oaks. And all developments should require affordable housing. I'm going to make sure that happens.
Thank you, Al. Kevin, please share with us what you think the city can do to remove injustices regarding race and social issues and what you have worked on in the past.
Thank you, David. As Joel alluded to, the training of the police officers is critical in that they approach a situation and listen to what's going on before they react. We have a wonderful community here where people respect the officers and obey commands of the officers. Thus, it doesn't escalate. However, the training should be such that you try to de-escalate before increasing the use of force. That would go a long way. What I've done is, for example, in my classes, about two-thirds of my class attendants, the students, are minorities. And one of the best ways to address social injustice is through is through education, giving quality careers so people can find their purpose in life, why God put them on this earth, and so they can raise a family, make a living, and have a nice life. Those are the things that need to be encouraged. We do that here in Thousand Oaks with the beautiful people that live here. But we have a police department that also respects the people who live here and treat us with the same respect we give to them. That is what I think needs to be done here as far as social injustice.
Thank you. Dan, please share with us your views about what the city can do regarding these areas and what you've worked on in the past.
Well, I think a lot of what we see as the residue of racial injustice is is actually an uncompensated economic benefit. I think the the forced labor of African-American slaves is on the order of trillions of dollars. It's never been compensated. You know, there was never any land, forty acres and a mule never happened. You know, so anything we can do to reduce economic inequality is is going to address the majority of the situation. On the other hand, I think learning Esperanto, which is a universal synthetic language to create understanding between nations would would be great. Even if English is kind of the de facto language, you can use Esperanto to translate from one language to another. And there's about a million speakers of it around the world. And that that creates a lot of racial unity and ethnic unity. Actually, the word race is banned in Norway. They don't even use it. They just say unfair discrimination because all these racial problems really started with the use of that word.
Thank you. Danny, please share with us your thoughts about what the city can do in this area and what you've worked on in the past.
So I think one of the first things that we have to do is evaluate our past as a city. City of Thousand Oaks is an incredibly redlined community. It's a community that has been incredibly discriminatory in its housing practices. And so I think we need to learn from our past and ensure that in the future that our housing is equitable and available for all communities. I certainly agree with Joel that we need to be people, as people who have privilege, we need to listen to communities, vulnerable communities. And one of the other things, just speaking to what I personally have done, is I think that we need to amplify the voices of people of color and other minority communities in our city. And one of the ways that I did that is through participating in the peaceful demonstrations that Al Adam brought up this year, and I'm very thankful to have done that. And I would encourage the rest of the candidates to get involved in that way. I really do think that that will be a solution for us moving forward in the city.
Thank you. Colleen, please share with us your thoughts and experience.
Okay, so I I believe that our our city and especially our city's law enforcement has made a priority of our harmony and respect for each other. I think our police in particular have expended a lot of energy and do focus a lot of training on in in proving that every day and living it every day. I believe that there there are real instances of of people in our community who are not being treated equitably. Everything from housing opportunities to employment opportunities. And when you ask me personally what I have done in my practices as a mentor and as a startup owner and a business owner, I've always sought to hire people who had the capabilities and maybe needed the training or what have you, and encouraged people to to believe in themselves and do.
Thank you, Colleen. Stop there. And Wayne will wrap up this question with you. Share with us your thoughts about how the city can better handle social or to alleviate social inequities and racial inequality. What have you worked on in your life?
I think the city of Thousand Oaks has done a very admirable job. But the thing of it is that we aren't faced with a tremendous amount of problems along the racial lines here in the city of Thousand Oaks. Everything is has gone pretty well. But I think continuing to have the police force receive training to keep them forceful apprehension of potential criminals is something that needs to continue. And I believe that as citizens, we all need to be considerate of racial inequality and do what we can to help. So it's it's more than what the city council can do or the city does. It's what the people in our community do.
Thank you, Wayne. We're going to stay with you, Wayne, to begin the next question. This is a very specific one. But Wayne, the question is, there's been a important issue with vandalism in Upper Hill Canyon. How do you propose to fix this issue?
Well, I think vandalism needs to be cracked down upon with our police force. So the vandals need to be apprehended and perhaps given a part as part of their sentencing, restoration, given the responsibility to restore areas that have been defaced and destroyed or damaged.
Okay, thank you. Colleen, same question to you about vandalism in Upper Hill Canyon. How do you propose to fix this?
Well, first, I have to admit I'm not familiar with that specific incident. And I do read the acorn and follow local news, so I'm surprised that I don't know about it. But in general, I would echo that if it's a if it's a repetitive incident, I think that there does need to be some sort of a surveillance, and these people do need to be caught. And I also agree that part of the the sentence or the addressing of them dealing with that is that they should have to participate in in cleaning it up. And I I also feel that one of the things that the city can help with is making it easier for citizens to get action on vandalism in this respect. So if this is coming up because it hasn't been dealt with, maybe we can fix that process too.
Thank you. And for the remaining candidates, certainly if you want to expand your answer as far as any other vandalism you're aware of, that's fine. Danny, same.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, yeah, I too, I too am not familiar with the specific circumstance. But of course, vandalism is not acceptable in our city. And thankfully, I know that we have an incredible public works department that is able to be called if any resident ever sees any sort of graffiti or vandalism or anything like that. And as a council member, I would definitely prioritize funding for our public works to ensure that we continue to create a beautiful community to live in.
Thank you. And I also am out of the area. Do not live in Thousand Oaks, so I saw questions about this, so I'm asking. But Dan, same question you about issue with vandalism in Upper Hill Canyon or perhaps in other parts of the city. How do you propose to deal with that kind of problem?
Well, we have pretty good technological solutions. Again, technology to the rest, you kind of a theme of the transhumanist movement philosophy. I mean, people use remote motion sensing cameras all the time in wild areas. They can even be disguised as, you know, natural features and linked with low-power, wide-area networking technology. So I think I think, you know, maybe some of that forty million dollar city surplus they could shave off a little bit for some remote motion sensing cameras to protect our wild spaces, which I'm really proud that we are ringed by wild space. And we use the Land Trust model to do that. And I want to give props to Danny because that Land Trust, Community Land Trust model can also be used to create sustainable, long-term, low-income housing. And that's been done successfully in lots of places. And that itself would address the vandalism issue on a wider kind of basis. So.
Thank you.
Go Wild Space.
Thank you. Kevin, same question to you. If you're familiar with vandalism in Upper Hill Canyon, otherwise, what is your view about handling vandalism throughout the city?
The challenge with vandalism is that it occurs so quickly and that it occurs and no one's around to see it take place, or those that do see it don't have law enforcement. There's a saying that in matters of an emergency, the police are always ten minutes away. So it's going to come up to creative thinking. In the West Valley, when I was with the board there in the West Valley Division, as well as the LAPD as a reserve officer, we had this encounter and we had this challenge. So we took what Dan had suggested there and we set up surveillance camera unit there in the station. And we were able to deploy mobile cameras in the area where there's high crime. One officer is now a force multiplier to look like thirty eyes on a situation. Plus, the cameras can record when the incident goes down. It's hard to argue with the camera when it shows you doing the vandalism. So the best option, I think, would be to use mobile cameras in the area, as we did in the West Valley where I helped develop that program. And that will help capture whoever's doing this on camera, and it's easy to prosecute. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Al, same question to you about vandalism in Upper Hill Canyon or throughout the city?
Well, people love their quality of life here in Thousand Oaks. Our survey indicated that ninety-four percent of people living in Thousand Oaks thought the city was either a good or excellent place to live. And a lot of that has to do with the aesthetics, the beauty of the city. We have a twenty-four-hour graffiti removal policy. If you're talking about vandalism and graffiti, we won't stand for it. We get rid of it immediately. And we also have a service where you can go onto t-oaks.org and go into what's called Connect T.O. and file a complaint or a notification where there is problems, and we will be out there and fix it because we want the city to stay beautiful. And, you know, it's part of it, too, is being a good citizen to participate in the cleanup of these kind of things. If you see something, please let us know about it. We'll get to it right away. Or you could even, like I do, attempt to fix it yourself if you're out there on foot or driving around and you see litter or you see some sort of an object that can be picked up and thrown out, go ahead and do it. We want to keep this a beautiful city, but go to Connect T.O. That's going to really help you.
Thank you. Frank, same question to you about vandalism in Upper Hill Canyon or throughout the city?
I will take it with the throughout the city because I'm not really familiar with Upper Hill. But the reason why people do vandalism is because there's no punishment for vandalism. I am a proponent of possibly putting surveillance cameras in. But if you put the surveillance cameras in, you need to work on it quicker. You know, you do a surveillance and then a month later, someone gets a knock on the door and it just, it gets lost and nothing happens. Put them, put more money into our police department, get more police, police officers on the street and make harsher crimes for people destroying what people work really hard to maintain beautiful. No one wants to see graffiti where we have a great community here and vandalism is unacceptable. And those people, possibly they're doing it because they're bored because of COVID. But we need, we need to make sure that we're strong on public safety and vandalism. There's no, there's no reason that we shouldn't be more enforcing more laws against that.
Thank you, Frank. Joel will wrap up this question with you about vandalism in Upper Hill Canyon.
Yeah, so I am actually familiar with the vandalism up in Upper Hill Canyon. I've seen photographs of the damage back there, and it's quite extensive. It didn't happen overnight. This has been a long time process. So having been endorsed by the current sheriff, Bill A. U., the former sheriff, Jeff Dean, and all the deputies through the Ventura Deputy Sheriffs Association, I have their ear. I can sit down, have conversations with them, and develop a comprehensive strategy in order to attack the problem. And that may very well include video surveillance, although this is in a very remote location, so it could be difficult, but not impossible. Nothing's impossible to 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 fix. I also think that we need to include education. We need to let people know what the environmental harm this is causing, as well as the aesthetic degradation that it causes. And we do need, we need to apprehend the folks because that sends a clear message. So there are definitely things we can do, and I'm anxious to get back working on.
Thank you, Joel. As a moderator, it's always a great night when you ask a question to a candidate and the first one is able to explain it for everyone else. I did the exact opposite of that. I had no idea who would know. And thank you for at least explaining more for our audience and for our candidates. Colleen, we're going to start the next question with you, and this is one that everybody is very familiar with. Since I last did a forum, the city of Thousand Oaks had to go through the tragedies of borderline and the Woolsey Fire. So looking, if you are elected, what are some of the policies you would have put in place to try and to prevent fires, prepare for public safety issues like borderline and others? What would be your overall goals to improve public safety in fire and shootings?
Okay, well, so let's start with fire. So I already mentioned, I do think we need to bring our open space into our fire mitigation process. We we impose the one hundred-foot of defensible space around homes and businesses. The open space is also part of the the ability to address the fires, get our firefighters a fighting chance to to contain these more quickly. I also think we need to beef up our emergency response in the city. We did, I think, an excellent job in Woolsey, but I'm just talking more about equipment and and processes to expand that capability. The second piece of that was the the crime issue. And I think Joel, my fellow councilperson, has already beaten me to the punch. And he worked with Jackie Irwin to do some great legislation that addresses people having guns who should not and getting them out of their hands. So those would be my two.
And Dan, same question to you about what you would do to lower the danger of wildfires and protect us from fires as well as shootings?
Well, on the fire issue, a couple of things come to mind. You know, a lot of these recent fires have been started by power lines, arcing during wind events. And the, you know, the undergrounding is prohibitively expensive. But there's another option that was actually shown to be feasible, and that's you can actually transmit power by wireless microwave beams at a pretty good efficiency, eighty percent efficiency. So that could be looked into. And then we're, you know, to get back to drones, they could really be amazing at firefighting. I mean, there's a high-pressure micro-water droplet way to put out fires. And and we could have swarms of drones, you know, getting on these fires when they're small. And this is like the twenty-first century of firefighting. You know, we're still kind of using old, you know, eighteenth-century methods of buckets of water practically. And, you know, we really need government to be at the forefront. And you know, we really need government to be at the forefront of examining all these best practices that are available, you know, in this accelerating technological society.
Thank you. Al, same question, what can you do to reduce the danger of wildfires, better prepare to help with fires and deal with public safety issues like shootings?
Thank you. Well, everyone in Thousand Oaks loves their open space. It always ranks the highest priority in any poll we take. And we have fifteen thousand acres of it and it's beautiful, but it does pose a challenge because it surrounds us and it's flammable. So we're going to continue to defend our, our open space, our homes, I should say, from fires and make sure they have a defensible area. But we want our homeowners as well to look at their, take some responsibility to, look at your homes, look at eaves, look at trees that you have around there, look at rubbish, look at all the kind of things that could start a fire at your home. Make sure your house is not vulnerable, that's very important. We're going to work with Cal Fire as well, we're doing our general plan update. And we're going to take a look at the entire fire program that we have with Chief Spikerman. And we're having a, a meeting this Tuesday, as a matter of fact, with some homeowners to talk about fire provisions. As far as our police, keep the funding, make sure they have the best equipment and the best training possible. We want more police officers, not less.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Al. And Wayne, we'll go to you next. Please share with us your ideas to reduce fire danger and keep the public safe as far as shootings.
Yes, I think that one of the big things that needs to be done is mitigation in the area of our open spaces to do some brush clearing in areas that would be best advised by the fire department to minimize the risk when, if fires would start in our open spaces, maybe have some additional fire breaks, things like that, that can cut off the, the spread of a fire if it should happen. And so I think that you know, that mitigation is something that is too long neglected in California. And I'm not sure how it applies in Thousand Oaks, but I believe it should be studied and dealt with accordingly. As far as the dealing with shootings like the borderline, that was a terrible tragedy that occurred in the city of Thousand Oaks. I think education is the key.
Going to have to stop you there.
Helping in that area.
Thank you, Wayne. And Joel, we'll go to you, same question as far as mitigating or reducing the danger of wildfires, preventing and also dealing with things like shootings.
Well, there are certainly a number of things that could be done in order to mitigate the wildfire danger. And Southern California Edison is doing what they think is the best at this point, although that's arguably up for some discussion. The brownouts, not the brownouts, but the power shut offs that they're doing when, during wind events is causing significant problems for communities and even firefighters. So I'm not sure that's the best, but there, there is another option. And that includes wiring that can be placed in those densely wooded areas that has a coating on it that if those wires were to fall, would not ignite a fire. It's costly, but it certainly makes sense, given what we're faced with today. It was mentioned earlier that I worked along with some of the member Jackie Irwin, not only creating a streamlined process to obtain search warrants, to remove guns from people who are experiencing mental illness, but also to remove weapons from people who are prohibited possessors and shouldn't be in possession of them in the first place. That was all done in the wake of the borderline.
Thank you. And we'll go next to Kevin. If you share with us your thoughts about preventing fires, dealing with the wildfires and also shootings.
Great question, it's going to be tough to fit it in with one minute, but I'll give it my best. Twenty-five years ago, I was talking to a US Forest Ranger who predicted that we would have an increased number of fires. And I said, why do you do, why do you predict that? He says Sacramento has changed their forest management policies. US Forest Rangers used to go in and clear dead brush underneath, throughout the forest. They used to cut down dead trees to allow the canopy to open up and encourage growth underneath. They also used to control burns so that way would take brush out of harms way by burning it. As well as the California Conservation Corps used to go through and clean out the areas of brush underneath the power line. So if any of those do come down, it falls down on dirt. All of those have changed because the policy is now let mother earth do what mother nature is going to do. And mother nature goes through and burns to restore the carbon and back into the soil again. So the challenge is returning back to the way it was twenty-five years ago that worked. Don't go back to what, don't do what we're going to doing today.
Thank you. Danny, same question to you, please.
First, I just like to start off and say that the city of Thousand Oaks spends less on police than a lot of the other cities in the county. And yet we're one of the safest cities in the United States. And we know that the answer to crime isn't necessarily more police, but the answer is access to community services. And so certainly I would definitely prioritize focusing on Ventura County behavioral health and other nonprofit organizations in the city of Thousand Oaks. Partner with them so that we prevent individuals who potentially have mental health issues from creating, from participating in mass shootings like we had with the borderline tragedy. As far as wildfire management is concerned, I agree with Colleen that I think we seriously need to explore better management of our open space. And also ensure that we have an alert system that's adequate and is giving good information to citizens during wildfires and other natural disasters.
Thank you, Frank. We'll wrap up with you about dealing with wildfires and shootings.
All right, great, thank you. Can I have thirty hours for this one? It's like, you know, you look at, you look at the fire management, the fire management has been awful. We're dealing with environmentalists that want us to leave the forests alone. Believe it or not, President Trump wanted California to clean the forests. Everyone made fun of him, rape the forest, how could we do that? When I was a boy back in seventies and eighties in California, we get to Santa Ana winds, we didn't have the fires. Why didn't we have the fires? Because we had brush clearance, we have controlled burns. It just, we got to get back to that. We got to, we got to do the, the smart thing and not, oh, well, you can't do controlled burns because it's going to hurt the environment. I did want to leave some time for the, the borderline shooting because that was close to my heart. A couple of our coaches were at that borderline bar when that happened. It was, it was a travesty. It was something that shouldn't have happened. Our courts gave that man back his gun and he used that gun to shoot those people. We need stricter penalties for.
Thank you, Frank. Going to have to stop you there. And Danny, we're going to move on to the next question. We're running out of time, candidates, I'm going to try to combine two of them. I think you can do these within sixty seconds. So the first half, Danny, is are you committed to no building in Thousand Oaks above three stories? So for all candidates, are you committed to a height limit of no more than three stories? And the second half of the question is, have you accepted campaign donations from developers? And if so, will you recuse yourself? If not, do you think you should be allowed to? So Danny, do you agree with a height limit of three stories? And what's your position about campaign donations from developers?
Thank you.
First of all, Mike.
Yeah, go ahead, Danny, we'll reset the clock.
Thank you so much. So I'd like to start off with that second question first. I do not and will not ever accept money from developers. That can't be said for all the candidates on this meeting tonight. And I think it's very important and I think we have to call into question whether or not candidates that do accept money from developers are going to be beholden to those developers or whether or not they're going to represent the people. I know for my own self, my own campaign, I know that I will represent the people on the council. As far as the three story limit, I think it's definitely important to make sure that we're preserving the character of Thousand Oaks while also meeting our need as far as housing is concerned. And so that's something that I definitely explore is whether or not that height limit should be changed or whether or not it should be, remain the same to keep the character of our city.
Thank you. Al, same question to you about, will you agree to limit building heights to three stories? Have you accepted campaign donations and if so, will you recuse yourself?
Yes, I have raised a considerable amount of money in this campaign. I have over two hundred and thirty contributors or donors to my campaign. Everybody from seniors to educators to business people, to homeowners, to residents, to civic leaders, you name it. And builders and property owners as well. There's a couple of developers who've given me some funds, but their projects have already appeared before us. And so I don't feel that that jeopardizes me in any way, shape or form. As far as the height limit, we have a fifty foot height limit on the boulevard. It was adopted by council way before me in the build of our specific plan. And that generally means three stories, although sometimes with a fifty foot height, I mean, you can get a fourth story in there. But, but that's the law, it's fifty feet and that's the way it'll stay.
Thank you. Joel, same question to you, your position about a height limit of no more than three stories? And have you accepted campaign donations and if so, will you recuse yourself?
Well, yeah, the notion that by accepting donations from anyone, that you wouldn't be able to fairly judge a project is simply false on a space. I have in fact accepted donations from a developer and in fact voted against that very developer on a project that he brought before us. So that's, it's a ridiculous assertion and I reject it. I too have taken donations in the number, on the order of about two hundred. And a lot of them come from people, members of the community. They come from people from out of town. They happen to be cheerleaders who, I was the cheer dad. If you happen to read the article in the paper this morning or the letter to the editor that was written by my daughter. I have friends and family who have moved away from the area that still believe in me and therefore wanted to give me money. So in terms of the fifty foot, as Al said, in terms of the height limit, fifty feet is the limit. And if you can get four stories in there, I, I, I don't, I'm not going to say no four story buildings. I can't.
Thank you. Colleen, same question to you, your position about three stories or fifty foot? And also have you accepted campaign donations from developers and would you recuse yourself?
So on the fifty foot limit, I believe that is the right limit. I, I believe that if it's able to accommodate four stories and that works with the design, I think that's fine. So I think it's more about maintaining the character of the city based on the height than how many stories that actually works out to be. I personally don't vilify developers. I, I think they do a lot of good for our city, including giving us development investment funds that we use for things like rent relief and the arts and so forth. We need housing, developers provide that housing. So I don't consider them some sort of evil influence or, or something to be shunned or, or looked at with dismay. I haven't taken many donations, but as it turns out, I, I have taken a few from developers, very few. I have very few donations at all. But I, I don't have, I would not recuse myself and I don't think that there's anything bad about developers.
Have to stop you there. Kevin, we'll go to you, same question about the fifty foot limit, three stories? And also your position, have you accepted campaign donations and would you recuse?
Great question. Guelita, California had big developers come in there, spent a lot of money getting their council members on board. And they pushed through a lot of building projects that changed the look and feel of that entire city forever. And the residents are very, very angry about that. The same is happening here in Thousand Oaks. I was approached two months ago by big developers asking me not to run this time, they would get behind me in twenty twenty-two. And my answer to them was no, it's up to the voters and my vision of government and what we want to happen in the city. So I declined that offer and they want to get their two candidates back on the board again, on the city council again, as they have to get these projects through. Now, I'm pro-growth, pro-development, pro-jobs, pro-business, but it's got to be slow growth that fits in with the city. To answer your question more succinctly, I do not want to go over the three story limit, which would limit our vista and our view of the beautiful vistas around us. I have not accepted and will not accept any campaign money. And those that do contribute know that they are not buying influence in my life. They must accept my position on where government should be. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Wayne, same question to you as far as your view about three story buildings or fifty foot? And have you accepted campaign donations from developers?
Yes, I do agree with the.
You sound fine.
I do agree with the fifty foot limit, if it requires, if a four story is in there, then I would be okay with that. But in general, I'd rather see it not go above the three stories. I think on a case by case basis, it could be reviewed. The, as far as campaign donations, I have not received any campaign donations from builders. And should I, I would have to take it under consideration as to whether it would be significant enough to recruit, recuse myself regarding any particular projects.
Thank you. And Dan, we'll go to you, same question as far as fifty foot height limit and developer donations.
Yeah, I think we have a great character with the city's design specs for, you know, appearance and, and character. I would like to see more underground expansion. Actually, I think, I don't know how rough the requirements are for underground developments and building, but that's the way to get more bang for the buck for a square foot of real estate, as it were. As far as campaign contributions, I'm kind of keeping the money out of politics by not raising or spending it any, but who knows next time? But you know, it's the mother's mouth of politics and why are people spending, you know, ten times what a job pays to get, to get a job? And I'm all for the repeal of Citizens United, you know, money is not free speech. Corporations are not natural people. I think that's really destroyed our political system. I'd be in favor of sortition where government's kind of like jury duty. You know, you go do your citizens' assembly and you, you form a committee and you pick some experts to solve a problem.
Thank you. So Frank, we'll wrap up with you as far as your position on building heights above three stories and developer donations.
Yes, the, the building height above three stories, I don't want skyscrapers in my backyard, but the fifty, the fifty foot has to be a little, has to give a little leeway. We want to give business an opportunity. And I worked in the auto mall and I worked, and I, I've heard these building proposals that we were six, six inches over and we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to change the plans and change everything because we couldn't meet the fifty foot. And then, you know, fifty-six feet, seven, you know, sixty feet, but right on the button and it's, it's not business friendly. I don't want, I don't want a skyscraper, skyscrapers, we don't, we don't need a hundred foot buildings. But the topography does look nice if it's varied. And I don't want to see fifty foot in a line, but if they stagger, you know, we could go a little higher. With the donations, no one's in my pocket. And I think the integrity of my colleagues here, I don't, I don't think that's an issue.
All right, thank you, candidates. Thank you for all of your answers tonight. We're going to begin with closing statements. We'll do the reverse order. Joel Price will go first and you all have the usual one minute. So when you're ready, Joe, please begin.
Thank you. I hope I've been clear here tonight in stating my vision for the city of Thousand Oaks. I truly believe in this city and I want what's best for all of its residents. If I've not addressed your question, I'd ask that you reach out to me, be on my website and, or send me an email so that we can get together, be it on Skype, Zoom or any other platform, because I do want to talk to you. I want to hear what's important to you. That has always been part of who I am is I, I listen to folks. Now I need to restate something that was brought up and one of the questions that was targeted at Al and myself. And that is that, let me be clear here, my integrity is not for sale. It never was as a police officer, never called into question, not once. So the fact that a developer may have given me some money does not buy a vote. Again, you all have a choice to make come November. And I hope that based on what I've said here tonight, my prior service, everything that I have poured into the city for all these years has convinced you to vote for me.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Frank Kinderly.
Thank you. I hope to be your next city council member. I am going to be that squeaky wheel. I'm going to ask why. I've been in business, I've been a finance director and run automobile dealerships for fifteen years. I've been in the real estate industry for eight years, my dad was a Realtor. I'm for public safety. I've been a football coach, being a football coach, I've learned to get adversity. I've learned to see what the field gives me. I'm going, I'm going to adapt to what's coming up my way and I'm going to act. No one really asked any questions about COVID. COVID is a nightmare coming down our, our streets right now and we need to address that. That's going to be our biggest hurdle and we need to get involved and we need to be proactive to COVID and make sure our citizens aren't bankrupt because we'll have more homeless people. Make sure that, you know, everyone is taken care of and get our children back in school. Because then there will be more vandalism. So the problem is COVID and we need to fix it and we.
Have to stop there. Al, we'll give you an opportunity for your closing statement.
Thank you. I'm very optimistic about the future of Thousand Oaks in two thousand twenty-one. I'm going to preside over a rapid and powerful recovery from COVID. I'm a financial advisor in my private life and in doing so, I have engineered an eleven million dollar COVID response fund to accomplish just that, to kickstart our economy. I want people to have the same path to prosperity that I had when I came here back in the seventies. And that means jobs, that means housing. Quality of life begins with a job. And these are the things that I'm focused on providing. The city is in solid shape. We have low taxes. We have high reserves. We have a double A plus rating by Standard and Poor's. That's about the highest rating you can get. I'm here to protect our neighborhoods. I'm here to preserve our open space. I'm here to keep our residents safe. Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association, the Ventura County Professional Firefighters have both endorsed me along those ends. And I want to make sure we have a safe city for our families and our friends to live in.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Kevin McNamara.
Thank you. My run for city council is here to preserve the look and feel of our city. Big developers have come in with big money to get their two candidates onto city council to push through projects that will change the look and feel of the city forever. I want to protect our city and make our city even greater. We have good people who live here. I listen to them every day in my practice as well as my teaching at Ventura College. My skill set brings my MBA, my engineering background, my work in research, as well as public policy in Washington, Sacramento and here locally. I'd like to be your voice. I want to listen to you and provide solutions that are thinking outside the box because of the diverse background that I bring to the table. Again, big money has come into Thousand Oaks. They've asked me not to run. I've declined that offer. And you're going to see big changes if they get their way. So I look for your vote. Go to votedrkevin.com. If you want to find out more information about my policies and direction for the city. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Dan Tweet.
Thank you again. We are really going through an amazing time here on planet Earth. We might be looking at something called the technological singularity by twenty forty-eight. That's just like, you know, eighteen years away. And that's, that's the idea, that technology will become so advanced that we won't recognize what it turns into. And governments are, like I said, they're not addressing these existential threats of machine learning, hyper-learning, of, you know, super volcanoes, asteroid impacts, solar flares. You know, we're not resiliently prepared like we could be. And the solutions that I'm in touch with by working with the Transhumanist Party and the Lightboat Foundation and Open Source Ecology, they're not going away. I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep presenting them, you know, I'm gonna keep engaging with them. And I'm just really glad that maybe Thousand Oaks can be that shining city on the hill for the rest of the world. We've got the best minds here. We've got the best potential. And let's make it from Thousand Oaks to Thousand Earths and this can be the headquarters. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Danny Chulak.
Thank you, David. And again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. So one of the things that makes this election year much different than years past is the COVID nineteen pandemic has shown us the incredible gaps we have in our community and in communities all over the country. These problems have always existed, but the pandemic has brought them to the forefront. My vision for the city of Thousand Oaks is one where we begin to mend these gaps and create a community where all people can thrive. We must address our affordable housing crisis and stop pushing our youth and seniors out of the city. We must provide a housing solution for our unhoused neighbors with wraparound services and case management. We must continue to be a leader in our care for our natural landscape and set an example for other municipalities to follow. We must support our small businesses and make it easier for residents to start small businesses. These are all the items I would fiercely advocate for on the council. And this is ultimately, ultimately the only way we'll begin to create a community that works for us all. Thank you.
Our next candidate is Colleen Anderson.
Thank you and thank you again, League of Women Voters for having me here. I'm running for city council because we have a great city, but we have a lot to do. And the next four years are critical to our recovery from COVID, maintaining our quality of life and our economic vitality now and going forward. We have a lingering to-do list of housing shortages, a growing homelessness problem, infrastructure improvements, especially fire safety improvements and expanding leisure options. And these things need to get done. We enjoy being in an island of beauty and safety and we have great hometown spirit. But we have to be proactive to keep it this way. It's not about us not becoming the valley. It's about us not stagnating. I'm a resident, I'm a mother, I'm a business owner. I want my employees and my son to be able to live here and enjoy the opportunities and the lifestyle that I did. And that's why I would love your vote.
Thank you. And we will wrap up this portion with Wayne, your one-minute closing statement, Wayne.
Yes, I'm Wayne Smith and I'm a longtime resident of the Cano Valley. And I want to serve on the city council to give back to my community. I feel that I have a lot to offer in terms of understanding financial accountability and fiscal responsibility. And since the COVID crisis that we have, I feel there's going to be a lot of areas of need regarding the financial aspect. Also, I want to see us develop more housing for senior citizens. And I'm just asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, all candidates. We had many good questions, way more than I could ask. I'm sorry to the audience that we didn't get them all in. But I thought I would share with you candidates, some of the issues that are on the minds of people, and this is only some of the other ones out there. Specific question about what is your position on social rehab facilities operating as businesses in various neighborhoods without the city's knowledge or oversight? What will you do to encourage more female candidates to run for city council in the next election? There was questions about what are your plans to include the disability community in the workforce and economy in two thousand forty-five and beyond? So some of these, there was questions about recovering from COVID. What could the city do to help with the reopening of restaurants, bars, gyms? And some of you talked about that a little bit, indoor church services as well. And also questions about landlords and renters and trying to help the people out who are really facing some real struggles. Those are just a few of the questions. And I would also like to take a moment on behalf of the league to share a couple of important points about voting this year. And the ballots will be going out to all registered voters in the state of California beginning next week. Those ballots need to be returned to either a post office. You can drop them off, mail them in any mailbox. They must be postmarked by November third. You can also drop off ballots at secure county ballot boxes. There's about, I don't know the number, but there's a number of ballot boxes in every city where you can safely drop off your ballot and you'll know that the elections department will pick that up and have your ballot. Whenever, if you decide to use a mail-in ballot, you must sign it. That's one of the most important things you can do is make sure you sign that and that saves problems. The league, we encourage you to mail your ballots in if you're using the postal service. No later than October twentieth or so, because we want to make sure that they get in and they can be counted on election night. Now, those ballots that come in as late as November third, that is, they're postmarked by November third. They may not be counted for a few days up to two weeks. So everybody needs to be a little patient on election night. We may not have results for quite a few days depending on this race. For this particular race, the Thousand Oaks City Council, you will be voting for two candidates. So any two of the candidates you heard from tonight. We remind you that there are resources such as Voters Edge, where you can, and that's votersedge.org, where you can go type in your address and learn more information about the ballot propositions, candidates, not just city council, but other races. You can also go to the Secretary of State's website. They have one called wheresmyballot.sos.ca.gov. And on that site, you can enter the unique ID that is on every mail-in ballot. And that will track it for you from the post office to you, back to the post office, back to elections. You can learn more about these things by visiting the league's website, l w v ventura county dot org. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters, a big round of thanks to all of the candidates for participating tonight. Also want to thank our volunteers, Maddie, Cheryl, Betsy, Elizabeth, Pat, everyone on the team. Thank you for putting this together. With that, I'm David Maron from the League of Women Voters. Thank you and good night.